Now, this is a question to councillor Sandeep Gosh from councillor Stephen Woodliffe. You're busy tonight, aren't you?
Trying to earn my money. Sorry. It's been pointed out to me, a question to councillor Sandeep Gosh. It's been pointed out to me that the fund for the replacement of the refused vehicles appears to be missing from the budget overview 2425 as presented to the corporate and community committee on Thursday, the first of February. Is that the line I've referred to, it's BCO three? I don't think it's in our budget papers, but it was in the other one. Neighborhood vehicle replacements in the new capital bids section in table 12, page 24 of the capital programme, funding and resource implication in the draft budget setting report, apologise for that. And if there has been a change in the policy regarding, or if not, has there been a change in the policy regarding the replacement of refuse vehicles? I think you've got all that.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Woodliffe. Would you care to respond, councillor Gosh?
Thank you councillor Woodliffe. It's a nice question, really. My response for this is the refuse replacement was included within the capital programme that went to CNC on first February 24. This was at page 40 of the agenda pack. Yes, this is a BCO three table 12, page 24 of the budget report, as noted within the council, your question. The refuse fleet replacement included within the BCO three neighbourhoods vehicle replacement figure within the 2 million for 2728. Of this budget, 1.75 million relates to the refuse fleet with the remaining 219,000 being other vehicles within the service. There has been no change with regards to plans to replace vehicles when their useful life has expired.
Thank you councillor Gosh. Do you have a supplementary question, councillor Woodliffe?
Not so much a question as a comment. I think I sincerely hope that the figures here will suffice, given the fact that we've suffered quite significant inflation recently. So perhaps you'd like to write to me, councillor Gosh, and confirm that actually the figures you've got here will ensure that we'll have sufficient funding for replacement vehicles. Written answers preferable, please. Okay, thanks.
Well, I'm tempted to say don't sit down. There's a, your next question is councillor Sandeep Gosh from councillor Stephen Woodliffe.
I do apologise for this, Mr Mayor. Where am I?
Question four.
Question four, oh yes. Sorry about that. I'll get there eventually. The budget report reveals that the PSPS contract's been increased by 20%, which I understand is for timely to finance support specifically rates, the towns fund, the LUF, I can't remember what the LUF is, and the UK special fund, isn't it? So the costs and the grant should fall away when this funding ceases. I've been advised by that by our section 151 officer. However, I understand there might be a need for support from our reserves. Can you quantify what the request reserves will be, is likely to be?
Thank you. Thank you councillor Woodliffe. Would you care to respond councillor Gosh? By the way, I don't know what LUF stands for either.
Yeah, thank, yeah.
Perhaps you can elaborate.
Thanks for another question, really. One of the main drivers of the PSPS contract uplift is pay and contract inflation. There are also additional grant funded areas which are supported by that funding. When the grant funding ceases, then this cost will also reduce. There are no planned uses of reserves to support the contract. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gosh. Do you have a supplementary question, councillor?
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you, Mr Mayor. No, that's fine.
Sit down there, are you?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Question five is a question for councillor Andorian from councillor Stephen Woodliffe.
I saw this. Do apologise. All right, I won't apologise. According to the consumer organisation, which Barclays and the NatWest Group combined have closed nearly 2,500 branches across the UK since 2015. Barclays Bank is insisting that it will still be a part of our community in Boston after the closure branch in Boston. But customers might view the veracity of such a statement to be highly questionable, given that customers were only informed of the consultation process after the decision to close has been announced. That's the question. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor.
Oh, no, it isn't, sorry.
Now you've got a bit more.
I've missed off the last paragraph. With the other banks like to follow suit and probably with similar closure and consultation timescales, what initiatives does the council have under consideration to revive commercial interest in Boston's town centre?
Thank you councillor Woodliffe. Would you like to respond councillor Andorian, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, thank you again for notice of the question. As part of our manifesto, the Boston Independent Group promised that we would develop a town centre strategy within six months of taking control of the administration. I'm absolutely delighted to say that we have delivered that on time with a quality piece of work. That strategy is a real live document which contains 76 action points and is overseen by an enthusiastic and committed board of individuals who ensure that those targets are delivered against time scales. In fact, they met this afternoon. We have also developed a really exciting programme of events to take place in the town centre. And I'd like to point out that the attendance of approximately 7,000 people at the Christmas lights which on and the Christmas market shows that local residents really will support the town when they are given the opportunity to do so. We've also developed a business forum and a taxi forum which will really help us understand the issues facing our local traders and enable us to have a continual dialogue with them going forward. You'll also be aware of the Boston Towns Fund, which is supporting Heritage Lincolnshire with shop run and public realm improvements. The levelling up fund, that's what LUF is councillor Woodliffe, not Woodlove, LUF, levelling up fund, which is allocated to the regeneration of Rosegarth Street and is known as the PE21 project. And grants for businesses and business support are available through the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. That's the UK SPF councillor Woodliffe. The new levelling up partnership and the long term plan for towns funding will be focused on addressing town centre issues and we are beginning to develop those initiatives now. The council is also benefiting from funding that we receive from Arts Council England to support cultural events and activity in the town. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Andorian. Do you have a supplementary question councillor Woodliffe?
No, I think I'll leave that.
Right. If I could stick my oar in, my niece works for Barclays Bank as a bank manager and she tells me that Tesco's bank has been bought by, by Barclays Bank now. So you might get your bank in Tesco's when you go in there. Right. Where are we now? Question six, from councillor Woodliffe to councillor Andorian.
Wait, Mr Mayor. Don't want to delay people too much. Want to get home tonight, don't we? In regard to the devolution project, given the disdainful manner in which Boston Borough council has been treated so far, what guidance would you consider offering Lincolnshire County council in order to help restore district councils' confidence in the devolution process?
Thank you councillor Woodliffe. Would you care to respond, please councillor Andorian?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you again for notice of the question councillor Woodliffe. It was extremely disappointing that LCC chose not to invest in the project submitted by this council in order to address the long held belief that has now been proved as fact that Boston residents get a much lower return on their council tax than other areas of the county. At this stage, I don't think there's anything that LCC could do that would restore the confidence of local people because they've been let down time and time again. If councillor Martin Hill were to dig deep though and find some additional grant funding for this district, it would be most welcome, but it would be very difficult not to look him in the eye and tell him that he's a day late and a dollar short.
Thank you councillor Andorian. Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question councillor?
No, Mr Mayor. I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Right, okay. We'll move on to question seven. This is a different one. Councillor Sandeep Gosh from councillor Stephen Woodliffe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think this question's already been answered actually by councillor Sandeep Gosh.
Do you wish to withdraw that?
Yeah, I think so because it's already been answered.
Do you wish to ask the next question? Question eight, which is from yourself to Sandeep Gosh.
Yes, I'll ask that one. That's one. Number seven has already effectively been asked.
Yeah, seven's gone. You're now on number eight.
We've covered that. So question eight to councillor Sandeep Gosh. To what extent will the budget for 2024, 2025 be dependent upon support from the council reserves? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Gosh, would you care to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thanks again councillor Woodliffe. I can confirm that only one of specific revenue items or capital projects are being supported from reserves. This is set out in detail on page 5051 of the agenda pack totaling 2.556 million, of which 2.115 million relates to capital expenditure previously approved to be supported from the capital reserve and £441,000 from various reserves to support specific, one of specific revenue costs as detailed on those pages. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gosh. Do you have a supplementary question?
No, not at this stage. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Not at this stage, okay. Right, question nine, this is, this is councillor Anton Danny for councillor Sandeep Gosh.
Forecasted parking income for 2023, 2024 is around £1,019,000 and for 2425 is £906,000. Could you please give an explanation for both forecasts while the shops closures and the footfall in town is down? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Danny. Would you care to respond councillor Gosh?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Danny for a very good question, as at least it's better than the question asked about my cap and how beautiful I look in it. Back to the question, Mr Mayor. As reported to cabinet as part of Q2 on 13th of December 23, car parking income is not achieving the pre-COVID levels budgeted for during 2324. The budget for 2425 has therefore been reset to reflect the current volumes. The additional increase in charges has also been factored in. The full implications of the new machines and increased enforcement plus work to promote Boston has yet to be established and therefore we consider this a prudent position for 2425. This will be monitored regularly through the software we have for the machines and updated on as part of the regular finance reports to the portfolio holder and the cabinet. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gosh. Do you have a supplementary question councillor Danny?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. Thank you councillor Gosh for your response. Well, I will just go because we are subcommittee for parkings and I will give you some figures for noting. The first six months of 2324, we've been short of £86,536 and 27 pence. On our permit income, we're short of £5,098.
Needs to be a question.
Yes, I'm going to come with the questions, sir. Thank you. So the first six months indicates that we are already short of £86,000 comparing to 2223, we had only 882,000. So therefore I think the figure of 1,019,000 doesn't stand up. But we have to look at the reality and I would like you to justify that 1 million once more because I do support the town, I do support the hard work of the council doing to promote the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You don't want to answer it.
Question 10 is a question to, oh, you do? Yes, you haven't responded to that. I beg your pardon.
Yeah. First of all, I really have to go back and check the numbers you gave, but in terms of addressing this issue, we are looking at initiative to support the town centre and its vibrancy through events and support to the businesses and markets. The deputy leader that leads on this area is hugely committed to driving a footfall and supporting our town. We will also use the data from the new system to analyse how the car parking is being used with a view to both incentivising use and increasing income. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gosh. Now, we have question 10. Well, mixed up here, that is question 10. Yes, it is. Yes, this is from councillor Anton Danny, again to councillor Sandeep Gosh.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and yes. All sources of income show for the year 2324, £56,394 and for 2425, six, sorry, £56,394,000 and for the year 2425, £60,597,000, while the gross expenditure for 2324 shows £68,157,000 and for 2425 is £74,205,000. The question here is how will the BBC manage to fill the shortfall? Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Danny, would you care to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, thank you councillor Danny. Table 11 on page 48 gives further details on how the budget has been balanced in each of the years. The figures from table nine and 10 feed into it along with an efficiency target budget to calculate the net budget figure. The net budget requirement is then funded from the various sources as indicated in table 11 to give a balanced budget each year. Efficiency savings will be required during each year to balance the budget, these being £664,000 for 2324 and £846,000 for 2425. Detailed efficiency and transformation plans have been put together for members' consideration. The areas being considered include service reviews, procurement, service redesign, alignment of ICT to create service efficiencies and transformation working with our key partner PSPS Limited. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gosh. Do you have a supplementary?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. You stated service reduce, reduce some of the services. Are we going to sacrifice some services in the town? Thank you. As I mentioned before as well, there is no, there is no cut short of services. We are trying to work on the efficiencies and that's what we are trying to achieve here. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gosh. Next question, number 11, so we're getting through them. This is to councillor Sandeep Gosh from councillor Anton Danny.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and sorry for the few questions we have. Interest paid on borrowing for 2324 indicates £494,000 and for 2425 suggested only £111,000. Is the latter interest means that the BBC will pay off or has paid one of its loans? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Danny. Would you care to respond councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, thank you councillor Danny. On 9th of October 23, the council prematurely repaid 15.449 million of external borrowing to PWLB. This has therefore reduced the budget for interest paid on borrowing from 2425 onwards. There is only one loan remaining known as the State Street Loan. If the market conditions were right for repaying this loan, we would also look to do so. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gosh. Do you have a supplementary question councillor Danny?
No, Mr Mayor, but thank you. Thank you councillor Gosh.
Thank you. The next question is to councillor Andorian from councillor James Cantwell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to ask councillor Andorian, is the cabinet member happy with the business rates uplift to East Lindsay and Boston councils received from Triton Knoll?
Would you care to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Cantwell for notice of your question and the answer is no.
Do you have a supplementary question?
I do, Mr Mayor. Your administration has come up to a year in office. What has the Boston Independent Party done about carrying on the work to appeal this award and what meetings have the portfolio holders for finance had regarding this, considering the major part of this infrastructure is in my ward in Bicker Village? Thank you very much.
Would you care to respond councillor Andorian?
Thank you councillor Cantwell. Well, I don't know what went before because you referenced something that the previous administration had done, but I can tell you what we've done. We are very unhappy that East Lindsay District Council.
Don't know. Scrambling, falling down.
For the benefit of those that are runaway, what we're talking about, Triton Knoll awarded, no, let me backtrack. Triton Knoll brings with it business rates and the award goes to the area that incurs, where it's the most expensive to put that line in. Okay. And that was deemed to be East Lindsay District Council because they put the line in underground. It's far more expensive to install underground obviously than it is overground. So East Lindsay were allowed to keep all the business rates, which was about 4.4 million pounds, and we got zero. So what have I done about it? Well, I've lobbied our MP, Matt Warman. I've spoken to him and felt that he was very receptive to my concern about this. I explained to Matt Warman, both verbally and followed up in writing, and I'd be happy to let you have a copy of that letter councillor Cantwell, that I wish to now campaign to change the legislation because the legislation at the moment is irrefutable. It doesn't, and we've taken our own legal advice on the matter and it's irrefutable. We are not allowed to benefit from the business rates. Well, legislation is just laws that are made by men and if they're made by men, they can be changed by men. So I'm going to campaign now. My cabinet are very supportive, the whole Boston Independent Group are very supportive and it's something that we would hope to achieve certainly within the next couple of years. And if you would like to get on board, you'd be really welcome. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Oh, sorry, one other thing, Mr Mayor. We are also going to start something called like a national infrastructure board. We don't, that might be, might have a slightly different name, but the partnership councils are going to create a new body, if you like, that will campaign on everything to do with national infrastructure projects because there may be a lot of, as I called it to Matt Warman, unintended consequences that arise out of these national projects. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Andorian. Your next question, question 13 is a question to councillor Andorian. What? Yes. From councillor James Cantwell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to ask councillor Andorian, what meetings have Boston Borough council had with the six county councillors in regards to coordinating lobbying and briefing them on relevant information since May 2023?
Would you like to answer, please councillor Andorian?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I can confirm that, oh, thank you for notice of the question councillor Cantwell. I can confirm that no members of cabinet have had a request to meet any of the six LCC representatives since the May 23 election. I can also confirm that during my very first meeting with the leader of LCC, I implored him to get his councils to actually do the ward work and to respond to emails from residents and borough councillors alike. and to respond to emails from residents and borough councillors alike, with the worst offenders being councillor Skinner, Griggs and Ashley Morris. I was pleased that councillor Hill offered his support. I meet regularly with all the leaders of the councils in Lincolnshire and would expect that they in turn would share any relevant information emanating from those meetings. As to the regular updates you mentioned, I have never ever received such a document from any LCC councillor.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Do you have a supplementary, councillor Cantwell?
I do, Mr Mayor. Why isn't the Boston Independent Party administration actively engaging with Lincolnshire County councillors? And equally, can you clarify what you mean by regular updates? As I haven't heard that, as I haven't heard that phrase in the question I asked and I think it would be good to get clarity on what you mean by regular updates. Thank you.
Do you want to answer that, councillor Andorian? I think you already have.
Okay, if I can remember what the question was. What, well, because they're lazy. That's why, one reason we don't meet with them, they're really lazy, they're ineffective. Then some of them aren't very nice people either, even though they got elected by the good people of Boston. They're ineffectual, did I say that? They're smug, they're arrogant, they're unpleasant. And as I said before, I meet regularly with all the leaders of the county and I would expect that they pass on relevant information from those meetings. I've met with every single person, councillor Cantwell, that's asked me for a meeting, every single one. I've refused no one and that offer is open. So if one of your mates wants to come and have a meeting with me, they can do. But they have to ask for it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Final question to councillor Andorian from James Cantwell. You're on your feet again.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We got there in the end. Did you know that the Boston bids, the bids Boston Borough Council put through to the Lincolnshire County Council for the mayoral authority funding didn't meet all the eligibility criteria?
Would you answer that, please, councillor Andorian?
Thank you for notice of the question, councillor Cantwell, and the answer is no.
Have you a supplementary question, please, councillor Cantwell?
I do, Mr Mayor. Councillor Andorian, the letter Martin Hill sent you on the first of February is a damning and revealing set of facts. Will you take blame for pontificating at this last full council as long, as well as your colleagues without knowing the full set of facts about why Boston's bids were rejected? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Would you respond? Councillor Andorian?
Yeah, no. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Right, that concludes the questions. Right, so are there any questions from members of the public? There's none in here, actually.
No, there are none, Mr Mayor.
Chivvy Chivvy, would you like to inquire about declarations?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So may I inquire whether any members wish to declare any interest in respect of any items on the agenda?
No, I'll move on. Part two, agenda items. We will now move to the agenda items for this evening, the first being the annual budget report twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, medium term financial strategy, capital programme and capital strategy, treasury management, policy, strategy and annual delivery plan. And councillor Gosh, would you like to present the report and propose the recommendations, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's going to be a bit boring, but bear with me. My fellow councillors, I'm sure that we remain acutely aware of the negative effects that ongoing international crisis are having on the global economy and that of our country, which in turn detrimentally affect the finances of every Boston resident, business, visitor and indeed this council. I must mention the extensive work the partnership has led on in lobbying the government regarding the IDB's efforts to address this key and critical issue for our budget. These pressures have meant we have had no choice but to identify opportunities to do things differently. This does not mean cutting services but reshaping and transforming them to be more efficient, effective and provide greater value for money for our council taxpayers. In order to support this process, we have identified an efficiency plan with officers looking to the short and medium term, which I am going to oversee. I am pleased to confirm that we are not using reserves to support ongoing revenue pressure and will use reserves sparingly in the next year and contribute to them where possible. Indeed, with nine million of existing savings, our partnership with East Lindsay and Boston is on target to deliver the projected forty two million of savings identified in the business case. We have already proven by saving two hundred and fifty thousand pounds on a mobile phone contract that this approach works. Therefore, developing this budget for twenty four, twenty five and medium term financial strategy, looking forward to twenty eight, twenty nine, has been time consuming and difficult. And I would like to recognise the excellent work by my finance team under the guidance of a section one five one officer. Gross expenditure of seventy four point two zero five million has been budgeted for twenty four, twenty five with a net budget of twelve point seven six two million. Please refer to the page eleven on, table eleven on page forty eight. The net budget includes an efficiency target of hundred and seventy two thousand pounds and six hundred and seventy four thousand pounds for the IDB. The budget for twenty four, twenty five capital programme is thirty two point six million pounds. Please note, the preparation of this budget has been a detailed process and the attached appendixes are the testament to that fact and reflect the latest known positions. About the government settlement on February fifth, twenty four, the main points of which are the twenty four, twenty five local government finance settlement is unfortunately for one year only, making forward planning very, very challenging. The funding guarantee seeks to ensure that no local authorities seize an increase in core spending power that is lower than four percent before any decisions about organisational efficiencies, use of reserves or council tax levels are taken. The Revenue Support Grant has been increased in line with what would have been the increase to the multiplier. This document has been through a budget consultation process with the public and members and draft budget proposals were subject to review and scrutiny on February first, twenty four. The assumptions underlying this budget report will be found in appendix one, the budget report on page thirty five of your meeting agenda in table one. Now about income. The return on cash investment reflects recent increases to Bank of England base rates, which have increased significantly from the recent historic low levels. A further meeting of the MPC on Thursday, February one, twenty four, held rates at five point two five percent. The investment we have and continue to make hold us in good stead. About the council tax and business rates, the previous medium term financial strategy committed to a council tax increase in line with the maximum allowed under the recent local government settlement. For BBC in twenty four, twenty five, this is seven pound twenty pence per annum increase for band D properties. This will generate additional income of hundred and fifty two thousand pounds and the increase will be reflected throughout the life of the MTFS. This equates to fourteen pence per week for a band D property and nine pence for a band A. Eighty eight point eight four percent of BBC properties are band A to C. The tax based projections for twenty four, twenty five indicate growth of twenty eight band D equivalent properties. Future growth has been projected at one point five percent. The national non domestic rates for production is now particularly important for the reasons set out in the report. Turning to expenditure for twenty four, twenty five, a three point five percent increase in pay has been assumed with this moving to three percent for twenty five, twenty six and two point five percent from twenty six, twenty seven onward. Pension contributions will be twenty three point eight percent in twenty four, twenty five with an additional lump sum amount payable towards the deficit on the pension scheme of seven hundred and thirteen thousand pounds. The pension contribution rate is assumed to stay at twenty three point eight percent throughout the life of the MTFS. Electricity and gas costs have been based on actuals from.
You've been over five minutes. Do you have the consent of the council of each carry on? Do I have the consent of your former councillor Gosh to agree? Okay, thank you. Please carry on.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Where I was, okay. Electricity and gas costs have been based on actuals for twenty four, twenty five. Vehicle fuel costs have been based on twenty three, twenty four actuals and current fuel prices. For the increased internal drainage board levy, the twenty four, twenty five IDB costs have now been finalised at two point eight to five million. The estimated IDB levy will consume all of the council's proposed council tax increase for twenty four, twenty five, which should be used to finance and support services, unfortunately. Increased contract and service costs are similarly a feature of the budget, although officers and members are working closely to seek to manage these implications and impacts. These include increased demand for homelessness support, external audit fees, PSPS contract increase. That's it. The capital programme. The capital programme is included in appendix one, totaling a significant of forty three point three five seven million over five years and is probably one of the most extensive this council has ever seen. The council's capital strategy is attached to appendix two and focuses on the core principles of capital investment. Officers continue to liaise with the government on the matter of impact of the potential changes to the minimum revenue payment regulations, which will impact this council finances. Turning to our reserves, the table on page fifty one of your agenda pack shows the retention of a reasonable reserve position, but one we need to build on proactively. There are some additional matters for full council's consideration as follows. Constitutional changes. In order to facilitate delivery and align constitutions across the partnership, it is proposed that some changes be made as part of the budget setting decision making process and these are set out in appendix seven. About council tax premiums, it is proposed that the executive board recommend that the full council reaffirm its previous decision in respect of long term empty properties detailed in appendix one and make a determination for the introduction of the premium for substantially furnished homes with no residence to be introduced at the earliest time April one, twenty five. Last but not least, Mr Mayor, an overview of my first year's work as a portfolio holder. Some historical fact. Before me, for the financial year twenty two, twenty three, there was a budget gap of two hundred and eighty two thousand pounds with no proactive plans to achieve efficiency. In the financial year twenty three, twenty four, I inherited a six hundred and sixty four thousand budget gap. And by Q two, we had achieved four hundred and seventy thousand pounds in efficiency. We had paid back the five year old PWLB loan, achieving six point four four million in discount. There has only one loan remaining known as the State Street Loan. The finance team is being instructed to keep a constant eye on it and if the market conditions are right, we will take appropriate action. Efficiency are identified for the financial year twenty four, twenty five and I will be overseeing this programme of activities myself, working with my team. This plan is a living document that will develop over time as options are worked out in more detail. Mr Mayor, I propose that the council approve recommendations one to twelve of the twenty four, twenty five annual budget report, medium term financial strategy, capital programme and capital strategy, treasury management, policy and annual delivery plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Gosh. I think you'll need a drink of water after that. Do you have a second there? Is there a second there? Would you like to reserve your, oh, that's the next line, sorry. You've got a second there. Are you reserving your right to speak later? Indeed, okay. Are there any speakers on this item, please? Anybody wish to speak? Councillor Woodliffe?
Oh, thank you much, Mayor. I'd like to say that I think we owe our thanks to the officers for this, really, for being able to construct this because it's a very, very difficult thing at this, at this current time to put toward a budget which is viable. And I'm thinking about the struggles of government, the present minute, trying to find an extra nine billion from somewhere. So according to The Times, what it said this morning, Mr Hunt's running around trying to find savings for nine billion. We're not in that situation. We're doing, I think, relatively well. Of course, the issue with the drainage boards is a major, major problem. Hopefully, the special interest group in this area will be able to resolve the problem because it's, you know, the levies themselves are actually sucking out everything we have and it's a major, major difficulty. It's something I think every, every other council has suffered from. Very, very important, we have the drainage boards. We can't live without them, but on the other hand, in the point where we probably can't afford to find that some either. That's the major problem. Apart from that, I'm very pleased to see that we did pay off the, the Public Works Loan Board loan. We managed to do that with a significant advantage. The cost, I think, fifteen billion, we paid back nine. That's very, very good. We got rid of that. As regards State Street Loan, that's been around the neck of this council all the time I've been here. Taken out in nineteen ninety two, I think, eleven and an eighth percent annual interest and no, and no opportunities to revisit that. It was written in a particular way, so we can't do that. So we're stuck with it, I think. If the administration opposite can find a way out of that one, which cuts the cost, then it's fine. But I think we're getting pretty close to the end of it, aren't we? Twenty forty two, I think, when it's realised. That loan will have cost us nearly six million pounds, one million pound loan. I think it's six million pounds back in interest. So it's horrendous, really. But apart from that, I mean, I support this. I support it. I read it through. I'll support it. My, my congratulations to the officers for being able to put this through together. I think they've done a brilliant job. It's after the officers who prepare these reports, the portfolio holder, as I'm sure had great input into it, but the officers have done the hard work and they need to be congratulated for everything they've done. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councillor Woodliffe, does anybody else wish to speak? Yes, councillor Gilbert, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I wasn't trying to tell a joke, actually, in respect of the comments made by councillor Woodliffe about the government, something along the lines of Superman managed to save Lois Lane, fallen off a skyscraper. I will, I will press on with this. And, and he swept down and he grabbed her in his arms and, and she said, he said, don't worry, he said, I've got you. And she said, yes, but who's got you? And, and it's a little bit like our relationship with the government. But I would like to echo, because the government are having problems as well as councillor Woodliffe has commented. I'm going to support this budget. I haven't got any alternative comments to make about the budget, but it is an annual budget and one of the things that strikes me about it is the fact that most of the anxieties and the concerns that I have about the council going forward are becoming perennial rather than just annual. And I'm particularly drawn to the fact that nearly twenty five percent of our income goes on the pension strain. That seems to me something which Boston Borough Council really ought not to be responsible for and at a national level should be dealt with through government, government intervention. We've only got an annual settlement in respect of the internal drainage board levies. Again, a major problem for us going forward. And we've got increasing, increasing homelessness, which is causing a cost to us and likely declining new homes bonus as building properties goes into decline in the next few years or so. Our PSPS contract increases and there's a whopping one hundred and sixty five percent increase in the external auditing fees, which strikes me as being just excessive and unbelievable. And as somebody, as a councillor, Anton Danny pointed out, we've got declining parking income. So there's, there's good stuff and there's bad stuff. To manage what we've, to manage this situation, we've, we've had to rely on government grants and the new homes bonus. We've had to draw down from reserves and we've got efficiencies to try and establish and transformation project. We've also got a modest increase in council tax. All this takes place, I think, in the context of a stalling UK economy. So I congratulate the officers for what they've done, but I do think that we have been lucky this year, if I'm honest. We need to think hard about what we're likely to have to deal with in the few years ahead of us because in my view, the economic context for Boston, Britain and indeed, I think, Europe widely, isn't going to get any better. And we can only anticipate what might, it might mean for Boston and the provision of our non essential and non statutory services in the future. So it's likely that there's going to be some very, very hard decisions to be made in, you know, the two or three years to follow this one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Gilbert. Councillor Gleeson, do you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I want to say how impressed I am with the work that both the portfolio holder and our officers have done to actually deliver us a balanced budget, a budget that actually still will allow for some room for us to try and improve the lives of people in the town. But it is against a background now of fourteen years of attack on local authorities. We no longer have any room. to move, to improve. We can't increase the council tax by inflation. I'm not saying we want to, but we've got to cope with that. And so year after year, it is going to get harder. And I think, in truth, you've all done a really good job that we can carry on trying to make things better in Boston. I don't think enough has been made of the repayment of the Public Works Board loan. Because of quick action by the executive and by our officers, we were able to repay a loan at a considerable discount, and that has strengthened our position. I mean, I've been looking at the accounts of lots of other authorities, and if you look at their debt, their telephone numbers. We are not in the position of doing a section one for one. You know, we are sound to a degree. The only sadness is we just are not getting the support from government that will enable us to turn around the lives of the people of Boston. In the last two years, over two hundred thousand, no, two thousand children have gone into poverty more. So five thousand plus children living in poverty in Boston. And that's just not good enough in a country where we have people with such wealth. We do need to change, and I do congratulate the office on getting the balance budget, because, you know, we need to make the town better. We need to work together on that. And so I'll support this budget. Because, one, I don't have any alternative. Two, I don't think there is an alternative. It's a good budget. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gleeson. Mary Pierpoint. Councillor Pierpoint, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to congratulate the portfolio holder and also the finance director for the budget, and I do support it. I think the way forward in a small way is to look at new commercial opportunities for the council to seek ways of increasing or bringing in new revenues, revenue streams through sponsorships, partnerships and other opportunities that we can work with the community and the businesses of this borough. And I'm sure we've proven it last Christmas when we had one or two people supporting us. We can actually do more if we offer the right sort of platform for doing that sort of, you know, work and benefits of additional income. So I do like to thank the portfolio holder and for finance director. I do think we need to look at new opportunities outside of what we're doing already. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor, thank you, councillor Pierpoint. I'm sorry to distract the councillor Danny. Do you wish to speak?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. I want to be arrogant. I will be very humble and just say what I have to say.
You're not going to be arrogant?
Yes.
Why the change?
Probably call myself snob. Anyway. I just want to clarify one thing before I will say my narrative. If we go to table thirty eight, on council tax four point five, the MTFS, CFS, sorry, assumes the council tax increase aligned with the maximum allowed under the local government settlement. In the case of BBC for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, this is a seven pound twenty, which is next to it is three percent per annum increase for band D properties. See table three below the estimate. However, when we go to the table three, annual increase, it stays three percent, which is or five pounds. So I'm a bit confused. Is it seven pound twenty or five pound? And twenty twenty four, twenty five, it says three percent, but however, on the table is three point forty five. Just, is it a mistake or is it? Christine, if you can just clarify, I just want to know which one is the right. Is it three forty five, seven twenty and three is five or the other way around? Thank you, councillor.
Who do you care to answer that, councillor Gaugh? What do you want to do? Well, he's picking, he wants clarification of the figures, basically. Can you answer that, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I can answer that. That's fine. The three percent is actually including BTAC. I don't remember the table number. You can find it out, but I think it is page thirty nine. No, I'm talking about thirty nine page number. Three percent is including BTAC and three point four five is excluding BTAC. Thank you.
Are you happy with that?
So, Gosh, if I may go on. I mean, I do understand we're in difficult times and the war economic is changing on daily basis. We have the, the issue with the Red Sea and, and, you know, what's going there again is something which is unpredictable. And then we have the war on Ukraine, where our government is pulling a lot of billions in that. It's hard to balance the budget, but however, our officers, they did a good job and, 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 I mean, they always get it right. The other thing which is I want to touch on is we, as we all know, that there is a few officers living in our, 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 our council. And some of them, they are very good and been loyal to us for quite a time. And I do understand that we have to fill the vacancies as soon as possible so we can keep ourselves. Is that not going to affect on our employees' budget?
Do you wish to answer, councillor Gaugh?
Yeah, Christine can answer that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more, councillor Danny?
Thank you, but everything so far so good. Thank you, Christine. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Gosh.
Okay, thank you. Right. Who else wants to speak? No. Councillor Dorian, would you like to speak? Are you speaking as your second there?
Yes, if everyone else has spoken, Mr Mayor. Okay.
Councillor Cantwell.
Apologies. I think there's several things which concern me about this budget. One of the many things is this administration's continued draining of the reserves, as mentioned in the tables on page twenty five or thirty two of the budget, particularly of the planning reserve, which I would appreciate if the portfolio holder could explain why that reserve is, that specific reserve is being reduced. Equally, council tax in Lincoln for a band D property is three hundred and thirteen pounds. Now, if you take the council tax that Boston Borough are going to put on and add that with BTAC, so if you live somewhere in Staneland, for example, you are now starting to come up to the figure that people in Lincoln pay council tax for. And I don't think this administration has taken enough time to look into how this budget attracts people to this area, considering that Boston does not have the services, it does not have the attraction that Lincoln may have to a number of those people. Most disappointingly, Mr Mayor, is the planning policy statement, is the pay policy statement, which I note on last year's previous budget, was proposed at ten point four. And under section thirty eight of the Localism Act, a pay policy statement is required to be proposed annually. I cannot see a pay policy in these papers, so could the cabinet member please clarify whether we are going to have to have another meeting of full council to approve this pay policy statement? And why this pay policy statement wasn't done in time and why the cabinet member did not pick that up? For these reasons, Mayor, I cannot, cannot support this budget tonight.
Thank you very much, councillor Cantwell. Can you answer that, please, councillor Gaugh?
We can take it offline. You want to answer? Okay, yeah.
Yes, please. Okay, councillor, councillor Dorian.
I'll do as part of my answer. If, if everyone else has spoken, Mr Mayor, I don't want to sum up.
I think we're all clear now. Everyone has had the chance to put their hands up.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Okay, I am delighted to support this budget this evening, and I would commend it to the council. There's a few points I'm sure that councillor Gaugh will pick up on. Someone mentioned the annual settlement only coming, annually, that's what an annual settlement does, I suppose. But I was at a meeting quite recently with the local government minister, who himself is an ex-local councillor, and he understood the frustrations of us as councillors in the difficulties we have in setting a budget and making plans for three or four years hence, when we only know every year what the settlement is going to be. He promised the room that he would look at that and that he had sympathy with our experience. The, I would like to commend the work of councillor Gaugh, who's part of the special interest group, looking at the IDB levy. And although councillor Woodliffe is correct when he says the officers do most of the work, and I'd like to commend Christine and Lou especially, and Colleen, who's not here this evening. Thank you so much to the officers for your hard work. I would also like to say that councillor Gaugh has earned a nickname already in local government as being Doctor Forensic. So he, he doesn't just accept a report, and I'm sure Christine and Lou wish he would. He doesn't just accept it without reading it, digesting it and chewing it and spitting it back out again. So he has spent a lot of time working on this, and to say this is your first foray into local government, councillor Gaugh, congratulations, you've done exceptionally well. Thank you. There are difficult decisions down the road, councillor Gilbert, you're, you're absolutely right. This is only a one year look at our finances. But to the point that councillor Gleeson made, there, we have had fourteen years of austerity. Things have got worse year on year, but we do have a light at the end of the tunnel. That light being the general election. And the sooner that comes, the better, because with any luck, a new government will look at local government finances as a priority and see that we simply cannot continue the way we have done. The repayment of the PWLB loan was a stroke of genius on the part of the officer who found it, and I commend him. I think it was a him, but Christine acted very swiftly. I got one of those calls that I needed to meet with Christine urgently, along with Cabinet, and we, we were delighted to make that decision very quickly. And to councillor Pierpoint's point, yes, we do need to be more commercial. And part of the budget setting process did ask all assistant directors to look at their services and see how they could introduce commercial aspects to them. We will hold some budget, some vacancies of staff, and, and hopefully that will ease the budget pressure somewhat. But to your point about reserves, councillor Cantwell, you're not going to support this budget, you say, because of two things. The reserves, which, I mustn't try, no, I must try not to laugh. The reserves are being dipped into to pay for a project that the previous Conservative administration agreed. So it was your gang that did it. And the pay policy statement is going to come forward in another council meeting. So there is absolutely no doubt that your judgment should be impaired by the lack of a pay policy statement tonight. That will come forward. But we needed to get additional legal advice on that policy statement so that everybody was going to vote on something that was lawful. Okay? So there's a very valid reason why we had to, had to defer that slightly. So I would, as I said, implore you all to support the budget. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Dorian. Councillor Gaugh, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mister councillor Woodliffe. Indeed, you mentioned about the State Street Loan. We are constantly keeping an eye, and whenever the time comes, we will, you know, get rid of that as well. We checked it, actually. Paying now, it is going to be far more expensive than paying just monthly stuff. Councillor Gilbert, thank you for your points. You mentioned about IDB homelessness, PSPS contract, parking. IDB, as you know, that it's an unnecessary burden on us. Initially, the government thought about paying from them, not to put the pressure on the council side. But now they put it, now we have to resolve it somehow, you know, it's an unnecessary pressure, really. Thank you, councillor Gleeson. We are trying hard to achieve the efficiency. But as I just mentioned, the IDB pressure burden, that's the biggest chunk out of the whole budget gap, which is just one hundred and seventy two thousand, if you see that. So, yeah, we will, we'll definitely try for, you know, achieving and obviously talking with the government also to get, get rid of, so that we can get rid of this unnecessary pressure. Thanks for your support, councillor Pierpoint. Absolutely. I, I, I thank you for that, that you support this budget. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now go to the vote. I believe you're going to do this recorded vote.
Thank you. If you just say for, against, or if you abstain. Councillor Ariamba. Councillor Richard Austin. Councillor Baxter. Councillor Bedford. Councillor Brown. Councillor Broughton. Councillor Butler. Councillor Cantwell. Councillor Danny. Councillor Dorian.
Four.
Councillor Drayton. Councillor Evans. Councillor Gosh.
Four.
Councillor Gilbert. Councillor Gleeson. Councillor Cresswell. Councillor Isard. Councillor Marson. Councillor Middleton. Councillor Mountain. Councillor Pierpoint. Councillor Priek. Councillor Savakim. Councillor Scoot. Councillor Sharp. Councillor Staples. Councillor Welbury. And councillor Woodliffe. That's clearly carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Having now set this council's budget, this further report on council setting brings together all of the precept council elements. This enables the council to fulfil its obligations as a billing authority in the manner specified by law and regulations. I therefore propose this report and its recommendations for council approval. The, the first point is the formal council tax resolutions for twenty four, twenty five are set out in appendix A and summarised at four point one. That council approves that the charge to be levied on the council taxpayers of Boston for services provided in their town will be seven hundred and sixty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy two pounds for twenty four, twenty five. This equates to a band D equivalent charge of eighty pound and thirty seven pence, a one point two, two four percent increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a second there? Councillor Dorian, do you wish to reserve your right to speak later? I thought you did. Yes, okay. Right. Are there any speakers on this item, please? Anybody wish to speak? Councillor Woodliffe.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I think we are in a situation where we have to accept this. I took the opportunity to actually look back at the tax increases, council tax increases going back to the year two thousand and seven, and did a bit of mathematics and found that, well, our council taxes increased by less than twenty nine percent up to, I think it's twenty twenty three. But the Bank of England estimated that inflation in that period was sixty one percent. It does indicate how harshly we've been treated over those years, really. Because although everybody wants to pay more tax than is necessary, the reality is everything has to be paid for. In those circumstances, I think that the recommendation is highly acceptable, and I will be supporting this. Tragedy of it is, of course, is that our income has shrunk so much in relation to inflation and the, the national situation. And I just think we have no option but to support this and support the administration here on that one. So I'll be voting in favour. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Woodliffe. Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Gleeson.
Again, to a degree, we're trying to what councillor Woodliffe has said. We are setting the council tax at the level that government is allowing us to set the council tax. We're not actually setting the council tax to meet the needs. We're not actually setting the council tax to meet the needs of Boston. We're not able to make things better through the council tax. What we're doing is trying to not sink by the amount of money the government let us take. The one plea I would make is this coming year, we are reviewing our council tax support scheme. And I seriously would like the council to consider improving the way we support hardworking families with the council tax. I'm not, at one stage I was going to propose some alterations to this year's budget. But I think it's not fair without proper consultation and the county being aware of what we're trying to do. But two districts within Lincolnshire do rebate the council tax by a hundred percent for working families. And I think we should look to do that because families are suffering in Boston. Too many families have to do more than one job to make ends meet. And what little we can do to help after years of austerity, I think it is important. But I will support this because this is the best we can do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gleeson. Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Oh, Mr Mayor. I may have been probably, just one thing I want to share with our colleagues here. I was, I was reading in a magazine and I tell you, I mean, I'm not going to go on my political side as a Tory, but however, I'm a human. And what other people feel, I will feel. And whatever is suitable for Boston, it will be suitable for me. And I don't agree with the government and the way they are running the systems. And they are not giving us any other choices except raise our council tax. And we do that so we can provide our residents in this town with some services and we do our best. And I tell you, I was very pleased two days ago to come in the morning and found all the slabs very clean and it looks beautiful. And whoever did it, I will thank them from here. It was nice. What I was reading in this magazine, it was a house in London. I think the price was like four point five million, but their council tax is only one thousand eight hundred pound a year. So our houses is around a hundred fifty thousand pound, two hundred thousand pound, and we pay more than that. So it's very sad to see that the rich pay less than the poor. And always as the middle class people and the poor people, we have to contribute to every service we want to get. And I think it's very sad. And I hope that the government one day will wake up and say, listen, enough is enough and we stop this. I will support this because we haven't got any alternative. And I think it's fair enough that this is, this will work for us and I hope that we keep our services going on for the town because this is the town we cherish and we would like it to prosper in the future. And I would like it to be one of the best towns. Thank you very much, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Dominic. Thank you councillor Danny. Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Pierpoint.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, we are restricted, but I think our professional housekeeping and the way we run our council as a small council compared to some of the national pictures of larger organisations going bust and bankrupt. I think we do a very, very good job. And I really like to say thank you to the portfolio again and to Christine there because our professional housekeeping keeps us intact and keeps our head above water. Well done and thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pierpoint. Anybody else? I'll come to you now councillor Dorian.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I won't be long. I will take the opportunity in my five minutes though just to correct myself. I only mentioned one point in answer to you councillor Cantwell about the reserves, how the fact that we dip it in just for one project, which is the Jeff Mulder project that was approved under the previous administration. But also that it's your government's policy that local councils like us should dip into reserves to balance the budget. That's your government's policy and we can provide that to you in writing. So you've just voted against a policy of your own government, or that's why you voted against it. Just a point that councillor Gleeson made around the council tax subsidy, Mr Mayor. We made a very small dent in it and it is tiny really, extending the support to children leaving care, who are adults leaving care. And that support goes up to the age of twenty five now and I'm really pleased that our council was able to do that. But rebating a hundred percent for hardworking, low-income families is something that surely dear to my heart, councillor Gleeson. I had two jobs as a young mum and I needed two jobs to pay all the bills I had. And any kind of support, I didn't qualify for any kind of benefit. But something like that might have helped me. So it's something if you go to consultation on, and I know you've spoken to councillor Riley, if you do a joint scrutiny on it, then that's something I'd be really keen for you to look at. So that's all from me. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you very much councillor Dorian. Councillor Gosch, do you want to sum up?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Woodliffe and councillor Gleeson for your support. Councillor Danny, I'm assuming is just a statement you made. But we really can't compare apple and oranges. The London stuff is totally different. We don't have any data to back up why they did this and why their council tax is so low and whatsoever. Because we don't have any data to back up. And as said, we really can't do anything about it. So thanks for your support.
Thank you councillor Gosch. We will now move to the vote. This will be taken as a recorded vote and Pippa will call your name and you should respond for, against, or abstain. Thank you, Pippa.
Thank you. So councillor Ariamba. Councillor Richard Austin. Councillor Baxter. Councillor Bedford. Councillor Brown.
For.
Councillor Broughton.
For.
Councillor Butler. Councillor Cantwell. Councillor Danny. Councillor Dorian.
For.
Councillor Drayton. Councillor Evans. Councillor Gosch. Councillor Gilbert. Councillor Gleeson. Councillor Cresswell. Councillor Isard. Councillor Marson. Councillor Middleton. Councillor Mountain. Councillor Pierpoint. Councillor Savikin. Councillor Priek. Councillor Scoot. Councillor Sharp. Councillor Staples. Councillor Welbury. Councillor Woodliffe.
I think that's clearly carried.
That's carried, thank you.
Clearly carried. Right, thank you Rhonda. Thank you very much. The third item on tonight's agenda is a local council tax support scheme, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Councillor Gosch again. Would you like to present the report and propose the recommendation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the last one for me tonight. This report is presented to council for approval of the cabinet's recommendation for twenty four twenty five local council tax support scheme. Having carried out a review of the current scheme, the recommendation is for continuation of the current scheme, which provides a maximum level of seventy five percent support for working age claimants. Maintaining support at this level recognises the economic challenges and uncertainties households are experiencing, while at the same time ensuring the scheme remains affordable. In addition, cabinet has taken the opportunity to revisit the support this council provides for care leavers and is recommending a specific class be introduced into the council tax support scheme, providing hundred percent support up to the individual's twenty fifth birthday. Finally, the report brings to the attention of the full council that a fundamental review of the scheme will be carried out during twenty four twenty five with key objectives to modernise and simplify the scheme for future years. The council is asked to approve the cabinet's recommendations. The first one is continuation of the current council tax support scheme, including operating in line with DWP's annual update of allowances and premiums for twenty four twenty five and the introduction of a class for care leavers up to the age of twenty five within the scheme. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gosch. Have you got a second, councillor Dorian? Do you wish to reserve your right to speak later? That's quite a difference. Yes. So do we have any speakers on this? Does anybody wish to speak? Councillor Dorian, do you wish to?
No, happy to go straight to the vote, Mr Mayor.
You what, sorry?
I'm happy to go straight to the vote.
Okay, right. Councillor Gosch, would you like to sum up?
No, thank you.
Right, we'll move to the vote. All those in favour? All those against? Those who wish to abstain? What do you think, Rhonda? Clearly carried? Okay, you've lost your bet, by the way. We're not finished at five to eight. Okay, item four, this is the final item on tonight's agenda. And this is the South East Lincolnshire Local Council's partnership performance report. Councillor Andorian, would you like to present the item and move the recommendations, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Try not to keep you too long. It's a regular six monthly update on the partnership performance. The last report was in September twenty three. So on page two two eight, section two provides an update on the annual delivery plan. The majority of actions that are already complete are on plan and mitigations are in place for any actions that are off plan. That's closely monitored, as you would expect, by the assistant directors leading in each area. And there's also an update on external funding at two point four and financial efficiencies at two point five. On page two two nine, section three, and the appendix A on page two three eight gives you the performance framework for twenty four twenty five. We've retained the current suite of measures wherever possible so that we can build up trend reporting over time. But portfolio holders have also taken the opportunity to remove any measures that are no longer useful. For example, the extension of time for planning. And we've added in new measures where they feel they will be useful, for example, some growth measures. On page two thirty, section four provides updates on the LGA peer challenge. The peers revisited the partnership at the end of September and noted significant progress. And I'm really pleased to announce to you, if you don't already know, that a peer review team will visit Boston in May this year. And already the group leaders have been invited to indicate which members of your group would like to meet with the peers. Your participation across the chamber is really important and welcomed. On page two hundred and thirty, section five provides updates on the priority boards for growth, health, safety and environment and details of work undertaken in the last six months. And finally, on page two three four, section six provides updates on the work of the partnership scrutiny with an action plan in place to address the four recommendations around ICT, communication, capacity and alignment. So overall, I'd like to report significant progress has been made over the last six months. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Dorian. Do you have a second, there? Councillor Broughton. Does anybody wish to speak on this? Any other chance? No, no speakers. No speakers. Okay, we'll now move to the vote. No, we won't. We need to sum up first. Are we just noting this? Okay, did you wish to sum up at any stage? Okay. So we'll note this report. Do you want to show your hands? Not in acceptance of it? Yes? Okay, well, that concludes the formal business of this meeting. I thank you all very much for your attendance. And you wasn't far out, Rhonda.